Good morning. It's 9 o'clock, September 9th, 2019. Welcome to everyone in attendance this morning. Thank you for taking the time to be with us. We're going to get started with Agenda Item Number 1, which is in addition to the agenda. I'd like to put one item on as 4.6 to your agenda, which is the appointment of a youth council member. We had an application on Saturday that I want to present to council with your approval. So I would put up a motion to add 4.6 to the agenda. And I looked for a second. Seconded by Counselor Hunt. If they have addition to the agenda, favor, opposed, then the motion carries. 4.6 will be discussion around a youth council member. There's no business arising out of the minutes for 2.0, 3.0 presentations from the Royal Canadian Legion.
Actually, it's kind of got me stuck with those letters. The letter you have it is basically presented in January. But mostly some people see the letter from Legion regarding the work done around the Legion office there at the building, Seven Street Strong and concrete work. And they place the work of our operations department that they handled that job and then coordinate with the contractors and them to make that work.
Yep, it does. It looks really good. It's down there.
Yeah, I was wondering because that letter dated in December 2018.
Yes.
Okay, so this is non-applicable then?
No.
All right, 4.0 is our corporate section. Can we turn that over to our corporate chairperson?
Hey, 9:02 AM. Okay, I've got any item in here other than the 4.6 doesn't need a resolution, so it's for information. So the very first item is a financial statement, income and expense statement to August 31st. Does, you've all had a chance to look at it. Did anybody have any questions, Patrick, regarding the items that you see there that are the variances to the budget, if you will, for the year?
I don't necessarily have any questions with that, but one thing I was gonna just comment on, I mean, I don't know what the rest of you, but I was quite disappointed in the article in the paper last week regarding the mayor's over expenditure. I mean, the article makes reference to finding other areas in the budget that are underutilized to make up over expenditure. And we, as council, all know that we had a $20,000 discretionary budget that we approved in December that didn't get to the budget. So we all know that. So in fact, in fact, the spending was reported being like 106%, and in fact, it's only like 78%. So we just have to make sure that when we present numbers to the media that they're accurate.
Yeah, well, like I think what happened is that the $20,000 wasn't added to that line item.
Right.
So therefore, it wasn't part of the budget, which constitutes the levy that we go for taxes, so.
But in fact...
So that $20,000 does have to come out of other categories.
Oh, I know, but there was no mention made of it. There was no mention made that $20,000 failed to get to the budget.
Oh, I see. Okay. Valid. Okay.
Just wanted to make that point.
I just, I do have a question, Patrick, for you on line 316, sidewalk construction and repair. We budgeted 8910 and we spent $30,000 to 15. Is that because it hasn't been capitalized? Or is that because, or because I don't remember us approving an over expenditure on that?
There were some big expenditures in there. I'm not sure that, some of them were like 8,000 total. Depending, there's probably four or five locations that are in there that they've done it. So I'm not sure if some of them were capital or not. I didn't think so because it looked like repair and replace, from what I could tell.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I would just, I mean, there's been a lot of work done and $8910 doesn't cover. Like I think the one on Park Hill and Mountain would have been...
That may have covered one area.
Yeah.
Like I said, there's probably four or five that were repaired. Whether the actual state of those conditions, I don't know whether they needed to be done either way, but...
Okay, so I guess I'm not quite clear then. I agree. I'm not sure why, the reason we had 8910 specifically in the budget. That must have been just some small repairs.
It's probably kind of consistent with what was done in previous years, I'm assuming.
Normally, most of it would go to capital, right, Patrick? Normally, most of the, like any construction would go to capital.
If it's new, if it's just, if it's an existing sidewalk that we're ripping up and replacing, then we probably wouldn't expense it. Or sorry, we wouldn't capitalize it. We would expense it. Because it would just be considered repair.
Normally, I always thought if there was new construction, any kind of reconstruction, it would be because you're adding life to that asset, right?
Yeah.
If you're repairing it, so.
It depends. If you go on accounting rules, like on PSAB and whatever it's based on, are you extending the life of an asset, let's say? Or bettering it, let's say we're making the sidewalks wider? Well, that would be a different story then because we're making a betterment. But if we're just, because it's an old sidewalk and it's cracked and whatever that we're just replacing, then it would just be expensed.
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me. I would just, you have to know that the budget that City looked at, of course, we wouldn't have looked at this one line item specifically. Maybe as a group we would have, but just from 8910 to $30,000, then just like, there's probably a lot more sidewalk expenses coming in. Okay, and the other one is 539, Public Health and Welfare Service. Do you know, like that is the, our contribution to the Agassi Medical Center?
Yes.
We budgeted 125, which we said we'd do for 10 years. We're at 167, 987. So that would have been, I'm sure, contributed to the renovation that's happening there.
Yeah, that's right.
And we are paying some of the invoices of FT3, the consultant. And I'll be working with the Agassi Medical Center so that we can invoice back to Agassi Medical Center and we can get it back. So we'll be on the budget at $125,000.
By the end of the year.
So at this, yes. And at this point in time, it shows over because we've hit all those invoices and we are going to invoice back to Agassi Medical Center.
Okay.
City is the project manager on that.
Okay, no, that's what I figured. I just wanted to draw attention to it. And the other one is, I believe, my eyes, industrial park line 751. By the way, thank you for putting line items on it. We have budgeted $16,000. We're at 39, 749. Is that...
This is, that whole number is basically property taxes.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So then there's not accurate budgeting.
Right, so the budget number is probably similar to what was done in previous years, but the actual property values have gone up or whatever the case may be, additional properties that are in there.
Okay, good. Now, just so that council knows, on your, that when we add up the budget revenue and subtract out the budget expenses, there's still a discrepancy of 794 right now, right? Same as last month?
In the budget numbers, yes.
Yeah.
Just because of the capital.
Yeah, have you, you haven't looked at that? Is that right?
No.
Okay. And then we got the utilities budget and expenses. Do you have any questions there? Other than the line 312, there's under sewer collection system costs other. We budgeted 24, 915. We're at 71, 772.
That one all relates to water main breaks.
Oh, is that right?
So they were quite significant.
Yeah.
I know they were busy for many, many weeks there in Rome.
Okay, that's the only questions I've got. So we have to, so there would, obviously, at the end of the day, there will be areas that we're going to be under, so we're gonna, we'll be, won't need to adjust. I mean, there's no way to adjust the budget before you send out the mail rates. Okay, that's it for financial. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, and then for other information is Community Services Events Report, starting on whatever line or whatever page that is. Submitted by Claire Ivey from New York. She's not here. And so you've all had a chance to look at it in all the various departments. And I guess the sun catch is done for the year. Community Hall activity for August and the plans for September. Meeting rooms that were booked, ice and ball diamonds, beach, program directors, all the various departments, and events that were facilitated out of the Access Event Center. She's had a busy weekend. She just finished, well, she organized the Communities in Bloom Conference that was held in Morton here the last weekend. I was there for part of the weekend. Nancy was there probably all weekend. It was really, really well attended and it was a very well-organized event. Although our grading didn't come out at the place where we would like to see it, but we will be working on that in the future and hopefully we'll be able to ante that up by... I think all we're asking for is one more point, so that's not very planned. I think we came up with a four. We'd love it to be a five.
Who would like to send Kudos to Brian Tissom out of the beach this year? A lot of different programs he initiated. The campground, when the weather was, was good, was well-attended. They had lots of campers, lots of people using the facilities. And I think he did an amazing job up there this year. It was cleaner. So Kudos to Brian.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody have any comments, questions regarding the Community Services Events Report? Claire's down here. We did get an email from her that she's busy recapping the events of the weekend. And thank you, by the way, Peter Cantillon for being there and did a very good job being her volunteer topic speaker. Very professionally done, actually. You did very well.
It happens once in a while.
I actually had to do a double take to see if that was actually you or not.
I concentrate at all with the one of Eddie here.
Okay, Deputy City Manager, report corporate, 4.3. Patrick, I'll let you speak to it.
Sure, just for information only. I just tried to kind of summarize what I've been working on lately a little bit, some of the major things. The list isn't exhaustive, but just try to get something.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah.
Unless anyone has any questions?
Well, maybe just what, you probably have time. If you wanted to just, like supplemental tax notices. I know there's some questions about that one back. Yeah, like a lot of them this year. Is that more than usual or not?
There was more than usual and the formatting was different as well. So normally, a lot of the calculation and summarization, I guess, of the calculation would have been done by assessment branch. It's now available online instead, so it's not sent to us. So we go get it.
Oh, okay.
And in that process, there is, let's say, one property, but one property will have multiple line items for different changes that happen during the year. Makes perfect sense for the assessment branch, maybe, but for us, we had a harder time kind of understanding what was going on.
Okay.
So that process took a little bit longer than normal, but Tara did an excellent job of, she put in lots of hours and stuff to get that out of time, so that was excellent.
Well, the assessment branch has fallen apart since some people are retired, you know? No comment, I guess.
No, no comment. Too many years ago.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have any questions?
Do you have any idea when you're hiring or specifically a clientele or the final decision or...
There's just been some holidays in the midst here. Mary Ann's been on holidays as well, so it should be shortly, I'm thinking. There's still a few applications trickling in, but okay.
Okay, we've got that. That's it? Anybody have anything else? No? Okay, 4.4, City of Winker rezoning notice. That's for information. I don't think you want to spend a lot of time on that. Doesn't affect us much, Martin?
Not at all.
Unless we want to, we don't just let it go.
Unless you're making a move.
Yeah. Okay, and then we have the, just for information, we can't talk about the variation order of 5-2019, 881 Thorn Hill. And if anybody has any questions on that, I guess they can speak to you because we'll, there'll be a hearing at the next council meeting and we will deal with the issues at that time. Okay, and then we have Mayor Verley, you want her to... Oh, just, what's Urban Forest?
Operations.
Mountain Report. Did I miss that?
Urban Operations.
That came in right after...
That's Operations.
Well, that's Operations. Okay, I'm sorry. So I gotta stop here. Youth Council Member. Mayor Verley, you want to do...
Yeah, can I go back to 4.4 briefly?
Oh.
Just for the sake, I mean, we have all the reports on here, but when it goes to, when it goes to camera, there's no explanation of substance of it.
Okay.
Can we get Mr. Sanders just to briefly speak to it? Just for the benefit of the public?
Yes, me, Martin. And Mayor Verley has asked if you just wanted to speak briefly on to the 4.4. Because we got camera rolling and the people need to know, I guess, would like to know what that topic of that item is. That City of Winker rezoning notice.
Oh, the City Wickler one is they're adding suburb to their suburb. They're taking land that's designated urban neighborhood under the development plan and rezoning from community reserve to various intensities of residential. It's in the northwest quadrant, north of the highway area that they began developing about three or four years ago. No issue for us whatsoever.
No.
Effectively. What happens with these is they send it, these notices to the district member municipalities. Practice inside been here is they refer to me for comment. And if there's any concerns or anything that's unusual or hard to understand, I make contact with their staff and hash things out. In this case, there's no need to. It's pretty straightforward.
Is that fair enough then?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll let you deal with 4.6, Youth Member.
All right, 4.6, under organizational bylaw, we have a position for a youth member council, or youth council member, sorry. We haven't had one in five, six years, maybe. We did have one application from Molly Wheeler. I do know her a little bit. I've gotten, had the opportunity to meet her. She is, she is an instructor in the summer and that's primarily how I know her. My children are...
What's her first name?
Molly.
Molly.
She won the National Student Debate last year, the national ones. She's very bright and she's now the Student Body President at Morton Collegiate. So she sent this letter to council, to the members of Morton City Council. Please accept this letter as my application for the youth member on city council. I feel it is a position where I would offer insight from the young people in our community as I was elected to be the Student Body President at Morton Collegiate Institute for the 2019-2020 school year. I believe this connection to the school would be a very valuable asset as I would be a liaison between the city council and the student council. Furthermore, I have a passion for making our community a better place and this role will give me the ability to further achieve this. I feel incredibly lucky to have lived in Morton for my whole life, being raised in this community has given me the opportunity to participate in various activities found in cities while enjoying the lifestyle of small-town living. Morton is a fun, safe, and accepting environment in which I'm honored to have grown up. I would be more than proud to be in a position where I could use my voice to communicate the ideas and thoughts of our youth while having a positive impact on our city. I look forward to hearing you, look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Molly Wheeler. I need bifocals. So I'll distribute this to council as well as to the administrative staff for resolution on that.
Council.
Yeah.
Do we need a resolution now?
No.
To accept or no? I thought you said council.
Yeah, it can happen.
Okay. 919, Counselor Frost.
Oh, this will be quick. Operations line 152, 5354 are all for information only. The facilities report we just got. Glad everybody read everything else. No questions. That'll be it. We'll be done with that.
Can I just ask a question, Fazel? Do we do have any idea on that, what's that, is it KTI? That water meter, is that the system, or is that the vendor?
Yes.
Do we have any idea when that's gonna begin or...
We already started the process, so we are working with them. But it's not going to complete with this due to complexity and a lot of next needs to be done. So we already started the process with KTI. I'll provide more information in the next committee meeting.
And for runway lighting at the airport?
We've already, we've already, we've worked the contract.
Okay.
And this thing should have been done by end of October.
Okay, thanks.
Just for clarification on the urban forestry report, it was noted that low spots, several sunken plots in low spots at the cemetery were filled with topsoil and grass seed. But just for clarification, if there was tilting headstones, that's the family's responsibility for re-leveling, right? Yeah.
Should we be in contact with some of those that have tilted headstones to make sure that they're aware of it?
I just had one citizen comment on that and just asked for clarification. So if, I'll check back with him and if the low spot has been addressed, then it makes sense to re-levels.
Yeah, let's say it's not what we agreed, but the headstones tilted.
Yeah.
Can we not contact those people to let them know that it's...
I guess if there's contact.
Because some of them are under problems, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so we should be...
That information's available.
Trying to fix some of those up.
On 5.1, regarding lagoon capacity, can we get an update on where that's at?
Lagoon capacity?
Yeah.
We don't have any updates on this at this point in time. But we are working on, working with the county council on sustainable development at this point in time to prepare a real plan for that. As part of my report as well.
1,000 for operation, Brown.
All right, 6.0, 922. Fire chief report, we have the report, no fire chief. So I'll answer questions if I can, but I can't. So you'll have to take this as operational, as informational. 6.2, the police chief report, we do have the police chief with us, so we recognize chief to do that.
Morning.
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 Good morning, Brian.
Any questions on the report you said?
You look like you had a busy, busy month when you're reading through.
Very busy.
Yeah, just accidents and especially, is a lot of these domestic disputes, is that still the meth problem? Is a lot of that attributed to that?
Some, some is.
Okay.
Majority are alcohol-related, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. But some, some meth. Still a lot of alcohol at this point. And sometimes not at all. Just there's a lot of domestic situations that we deal with. Of course, everybody's worried those are the most dangerous to deal with and walk into, so. Yeah, unfortunately.
That was a corn apple series.
It's a corn apple. It was the only thing to say. We made it through another one without any major incidents. It's been busy, of course. It always is. Nothing, nothing major, I think. And I had my wrap-up meeting with the corn apple. I think things went very well. Major issues, I think I would have contacted already if there was. Of course, we have the security, all my EDA security as well as our guys. So I don't believe, I haven't heard of any, anything major, so just the typical calls for noise complaints and disturbances and those kind of things, but...
I heard there was a close call in the parade with a kid chasing a balloon.
Yeah, yeah, and that's one of the things that we're probably gonna have a discussion on with the participants not doing that. Again, it's the same reason they don't throw candy onto the road, right? So kids don't run up and under the, accidentally under the wheels of floats and that kind of thing. So the same thing with balloons now. I think that needs to be a rule that, because obviously they're so focused, it just runs. It was close.
Yeah, I heard counsel or sergeant Ronnie.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. But no, it didn't go along.
What happened with the accident yesterday? Was it destroyed or was that...
Yeah, motorcycle and truck. Like a pickup truck, not a semi-truck. But again, at that intersection, the motorcycle was going westbound through the intersection in the right-hand curving lane, had to right-of-way and a vehicle turning north, trying to get through. And the motorcycle went beside of the vehicle, so not good.
Well, it was mentioned that should get a report from you and Andy, but we've issued, or we've sent that in before.
We have.
Should we update that maybe?
We are, yeah. We're going to update some staffs. And MIT does have access to all these, you know, the accidents and everywhere the problems, so. But it doesn't hurt to make sure they have that. Certainly will. I mean, it's always easy for somebody looking from the outside, but to me, that's the easiest solution. Changing the heads, the light handle, right? To have a turning signal in there. What the cost is, I'm not sure. At this point, it's gonna cost a life, I think, unfortunately, before something is done at both Mountain and First Street. We don't know that needs to happen.
Apparently, that accident on First Street on Saturday, right? First and Thorn Hill?
First and Thorn Hill on Saturday.
That's what I heard. Somebody at the Communities in Bloom Conference said there's a...
Nothing major.
Probably not.
Yeah.
But enough that they mentioned it.
And just a bit of an update if there's no other questions.
Yeah, I did have one. The firearms, there was 17 or whatever, is that...
Firearms, are they?
Yeah.
No, that's probably answering this question. There wasn't 17 firearms.
I just thought I had...
Is that, which reporter you look at?
I just had it marked on my book here, so. I didn't mark the reference part of it. It was right where the meth, there was crystal meth 14.
Yeah. But there's three different reports here. You know which one you're referring to? There's a year-end, just the August report one.
Sorry. I was looking through it and marked it on there. I just thought 17 firearms, right? It was, uh, there.
Page three.
It's page three of eight.
Right, I got it.
88, yeah.
That'll be something, a miscue there.
Okay.
Yeah. There's not 17. No, we had that one time on the frog, one, two, that was 30 some. It was just something was entered incorrectly, so I'll check on that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. And just an update for our application process. This week, we have interviews lined up for Wednesday and Thursday for police councils. So Mary Ann will be sitting in on those with us to conduct those interviews morning and afternoon, Wednesday and Thursday. So hopefully, shortly after that, we'll do some background checks and be able to make a decision. And then, sorry, the fall is typically the best time for our training and courses and that sort of thing after summer is done. So we'll be sending a few on various courses and then, of course, our annual firearms qualifications on various courses, and of course, our annual firearms qualifications and training and youth support training throughout the fall, so it will be busy time for, for training, and also November, October, and November. Well, the weather's still decent, we hold, we hold silence, so. Any questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you to you and those under your direction.
Thank you.
For keeping us safe, we appreciate it. Uh, six point three, City Manager.
So already finished this on the local events, and another thing I would like to mention, uh, running on Apple, uh, events, so the city, uh, city administration did a really good job in working with the Conan Apple staff and volunteers, and I would like to thank, uh, Andy, Tim Rymer, Tim Morrison, Brad, and Andy, Andy Pison, Jason Lebrun, um, and, uh, clearing me and the teams, uh, to contribute into another, uh, successful year of this event, as well as Victor Powerling, uh, regarding, uh, setting up a booth at the Conan Apple event, and all the volunteer city staff who worked their time to be a booth as well.
Can I just go back to regional wastewater treatment? What, what status is that environmental license at, you know?
Uh, I believe, uh, the treatment we mentioned was Class A, and in the, uh, environmental Act, uh, license, uh, proposal, and which, uh, I believe, never used by any regional wastewater treatment plant in, uh, to, I believe, or even in Canada, so they're doing some more research on it, so that's why there are some delays in getting that listed.
It's because of our design, or is it because of what?
It's basically our design of treatment on that, so it says, uh, it could be really good treatment, and, uh, they're looking, uh, sustainable development is looking at it, because they need some more research on it, so, because it, it's never used in any municipality in that, so.
Really?
Is that gonna hold it up?
It is at this point.
We had, I think it was Goldar?
Golden.
Golden?
Yeah, for PC.
Golden and so.
The Golden Association regarding the design, but we were talking about the treatment of, uh, of the sledge or whatever, or solid waste, and, uh, so sustainable development, I talked to them, and they says that, uh, they're working on it, and, uh, we'll, we'll get it soon. So I will have another meeting with them.
Like it doesn't need to redesign?
No, no, it doesn't need to be redesigned, adjusted, uh, class of the treatment they're looking at, and, uh, uh, once they complete their research, uh, they mention that license to us.
Was that Goldar or Golden?
That's Goldar.
Goldar.
Goldar, E R, okay.
They were kind of like, okay, then you just can review or design, and then everything is good.
Well, we recognized it at the time that it was a different design, but it was highly recommended by our engineer the, the other day, and, uh, so the council, uh, wanted a second opinion on the design, and that's why we hired the Goldar to do it.
Association.
Well, the other thing was the cost, too, that it was considerably less, or it raised some questions.
I just wanna make sure we're heading in the right direction, so now we got new people around the table, so, just wanna make sure that we're going, so moving, uh, moving forward, not sideways.
Well, I happen to be somewhat expert in wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
No, I'm joking.
Another expert.
Another expert.
Add our, add our labor spectacles on this.
You got letters behind your name?
I do, not three ones.
Okay, that's good, thank you. And, and you have more to report, do you?
Six point four, sure. Uh, that's the, for the City Manager, why, six point four, the mayor's report. I'm gonna start doing an actual report like this, I think, 'cause I think it'd be useful. No, like, not, not, obviously with that on it, but just something that can actually be published. So Communities in Bloom, uh, we have a couple days for that. That was incredible, I wanna offer my thanks to, um, to the committee, Jim Hunt was on the committee, and other members. Uh, Claire Agnew did a phenomenal job of this, and, really, not only now, but throughout the summer, did our city, did our city proud. Um, and obviously not the outcome we, we had hoped for, but it gives us something to strive for, and something to look at, and, uh, to get some perspective from, um, as well. Um, been involved in a few, few different things over the last couple weeks, um, in particular with the, um, with the executive committee now, uh, involved in, in fighting resolution to Mornet. Um, we, I wanna thank the public in particular for their patience. There is, uh, when you're talking about a, a big utility, um, with a very complicated, um, utility, it takes time, and, uh, we are working hard and trying to find resolution as soon as possible. Um, and then, of course, uh, community engagement, met, met with, uh, five different, um, community groups, including the airport, along with Council Frost, um, working to, working to extend the, uh, the abilities of, of our Airport Commission, uh, to act in a self-determining way. Uh, and, uh, yeah, it's, met with some community groups, some, youth groups and things like that, and, uh, I think, uh, communities, uh-
Tended City Caucus.
Oh, yeah, Tended City Caucus meetings with the deputy mayor, which was very good. Um, and I think we should probably forward the, um, the illicit drug, uh, task force, that document to council for their review, because there are some really good ideas in there, um, for, for ways to engage our communities, uh, and, and they've spent the money to do this, uh, you know, and I know it isn't Mayor Bowman's, it isn't his duty, uh, there's natural health that falls to them to, to do this sort of thing, but they took the initiative to, to put together a task force and came back with some recommendations. And I think, I think we both felt that, I, I don't wanna speak for you, but I believe that we both felt there were some really good, uh, cost-effective things we could do as a community to prevent, uh, drug use in our community, uh, and we didn't have to spend the money for the report or the study, so, uh, we'll all send that around to council as well, and, uh, if anybody wants to Google it, it's the City of Winnipeg Illicit Drug Task Force, uh, you'll find the documentations along with the recommendations. That'll be it for me. Any questions on six point four? None? Okay, we have a resolution, seven point zero, uh, moved by Councilor Nancy Penner, seconded by Councilor Hank Kilbrun, be resolved, the council moving camera to discuss legal and land issues, in favor, please indicate.
Item number twelve, moved by Councilor Hank Kilbrun, seconded by Councilor Nancy Penner, be resolved, the council, in fact, committee meeting of council, and review of recommendations of the encampment meeting, in favor, please indicate, opposed, nothing which cares, we are back in the meeting, moved by Councilor Nancy Penner, seconded by Councilor Hank Kilbrun, be resolved, the council.
Well, that's, we will have a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
In favor, we have a adjournment, moved by Councilor Hunt, seconded by Councilor Amber, in favor, adjournment, please indicate, opposed, we are adjourned.
Okay, you'll miss me now.